Okay, thank you everyone who's here. Dr. Davis is joining us. Google party, I guess. So, we'll go ahead and get this work session started. The discussion is on the bids regarding the multipurpose center. We have to make a decision within the next day or so or the bid, the timeframe will run out and the bid would have to go back. We'd have to rebid. So, John or James, do you want to take us through this bid process again?
James, do you want to talk through the documents and the bid summary and anything else?
In December, you know, I sent everything, everyone, the information, you know, with a complete bid packet with all the amendments, you know, attached. Anderson Construction came in with low bid of 2.715, 100. And you can see across there the alternates for what we were wanting to take out, including things like some of the porcelain tile and one, you know, in the restroom area to go with polished concrete, different locker style, different type of impact resistant siding on the inside columns and everywhere, eliminating one of the dual batting cages, shrinking the actual size of the facility and possibly not pouring a whole full concrete slab, but pouring around footers and digging out and filling in and then putting the artificial turk on top of that. And if you really look at, you know, the price of the alternates, you know, it's around $150,000. So, you know, in a project this size, eliminating anything, I don't think that we would ever go back and add any of these things in. And the only thing that we couldn't add in would be, number one, would be the foundation part of it that we could not add in and we would not actually ever increase the size of it again. So, those two options are things that we, you know, we could never really go back and do. So, when it comes down to it, you're really just looking at $2,800, $29,000, $10,000, and $36,000. Those would be the four items that we would ever possibly go back and add, like the batting cage, putting porcelain tile. Maybe redoing the impact resistance siding, but besides that, those would be the only items that we would ever have the luxury of going back and adding at some point in time.
Well...
Five and six, if we skip those, then they're skipped.
They're pretty much skipped.
Now, you don't want to do that.
You don't want to do that.
If you take away the size, you just, we just need to re-bid.
Yeah.
Because that's, it's not going to be functional like we want it to be.
Well, actually, you're not talking about a large, a major amount of money in the first place compared to 2.7.
And just remember, we have $140,000 contingency added into the price of the bid. So, without any major change orders or anything, you know, the very last change order, we would get, you know, up to $140,000 back. But now, that $140,000 would be used to go to things that we could not bid out, the weights, because they're on state contract, security system, fire alarm system, camera system, different things like that, that we'd have to have, life safety things that we'd have to have anyway. But the law says you can't, even though we may use ACOM, we can't say we want ACOM to put this in. It would have to be bid and everybody would have the opportunity. So, we would actually pay those out individually.
Got you. What's the projected, I know we talked about extending that completion time. Is there, this, these bids gave what they, as a completion time?
September 15th. Now, in all fairness, since we have waited, you know, to do this, I think that, you know...
Probably October 15th.
Probably maybe October 15th, since we've waited, you know, up to 30 days. We already have our ATM permits, we already have, you know, soil sampling and all that. So, we're pretty much, we'd be waiting on the tax exempt certificates and paperwork that we have to file and then they would, you know, notice to proceed later and then they would go ahead and start states.
Well, let's hear from the money lady over there.
This is the athletic part, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, I had, I came out earlier today and I don't have very chance to look at it, but I placed it in front of you. It just kind of synopses of where we are today. Our cash, our capital projects' cash balance today, it's got yellow on it right there.
Right there.
Um, our cash balance today is at 1.5 million. If we look at the expenditures that we know we will have this fiscal year, being the one-to-one initiatives and technology upgrades, you can read that list. I itemized it for you. We've only paid just a little bit on some of these projects. We're looking at $544,000. I did add at the bottom, there's another $40,000 and I was just showing there if we pay the remainder of the architect fees that are due, we've already paid $117,000, then it would be $583,000. We're getting a little over $800 this year. So, that would leave our balance at 1.8. And then I gave you what we have budgeted currently in the capital plan or we anticipate that we will definitely follow through with for 2017, 18, 19, and 2020, just so you can see that our expenditures pretty much stay at that, from $600,000 to $800,000 per year and that's what our allocation is. So, we would look at borrowing the funds, doing a bond issue. I got new rates yesterday from Fraser Lanier again and I've given you guys copies of those, the most recent.
Are they better?
Um, the rates are better right now still. So, we're still looking at, right at $200,000. So, if we borrow 2.7 or 2.865 is what we did it on and that covers the $150,000 for security system and weights. Now, if we add that contingency, obviously, it'll be a little bit less. At the 2.865, then it would be right at $190,000. I did ask for another estimate to get that 3.4 because we're looking at renovations for Career Tech to be right at $600,000. While rates are low, we may want to look at actually borrowing that big, that total amount. So, that would put our annual debt service at $225,000 and I'm just rounding there. And that may be the better way to go. Going with someone like Fraser Lanier, we would have to, they would have to write in a seven or a 10-year call period and that means we could not really pay it back in less than seven or 10 years without being required to pay the interest. I don't see it really being prior to the seven years anyway. So, these estimates are at seven years. We might save a tiny bit of money by keeping that 10-year call period in there, but it's not a, it's not a huge difference.
But I mean, we want to shoot for as close to seven years as possible.
So, you said we pay off in seven?
Yeah.
Right. Now, this is...
Without a penalty?
Without a penalty. We could not...
It's a 20-year bond, but you know, we'll pay back in five.
Yeah, we can pay more than 2.25.
Right.
As, you know, as we can afford.
We just can't pay it off before seven years.
Can, we'll just have a penalty.
Without a penalty.
Um, one other option, I had sent in to the State Department, Mr. Taylor's office back in December. They were, they asked, would any school systems be borrowing any funds to have debt service in the future? And I did send in that we were looking at possibly having $3 million and spoke with him, he could combine us with other systems and to get a lower interest rate, but we have good credit, so we're going, we should get that low interest rate anyway. But the disadvantage of going with the State Department and combining is we could not pay off early, it would be the 20 years. So, I told him most likely, I didn't think you guys would want to go that route. So, I just laying it out there for you, but I didn't think so.
You spoke right.
You spoke good on that.
Comfortable with the 2.25?
Comfortable?
No, she don't act like that.
Comfortable with eight, nine, or zero.
She's a zero, right?
No. I wouldn't use the word comfortable.
But can we? And we can manage it?
Can we manage that?
We, we can, but some of these things that you see in our future years, if we get the 2.25, you can see the projected balance that I have there. I mean, our equity would just, just be a little bit lower. I like to carry the 1 million because you never know about unexpected expenses, but, and I gave our actual capital expenses for each year from 2008 to 2015. You can see that they're rarely below $800,000. 2011 they were, but that was a preparation year and you can see, I made a note, we actually used our capital projects funds to cover us for things like utilities and such as that. And you can do that in your direction. But, um, now, we did have a bond, some of those first few years, we had a bond issue. So, obviously, we were doing more capital expenditures and using those funds for that.
So, what year was preparation 11?
2011.
Billy Lawrence Chevrolet is your home for great deals and real savings on both new and pre-owned cars, trucks, and SUVs. Right now, choose their great selection of GM-certified vehicles that come with a five-year, 100,000-mile warranty. And their service department has trained technicians yet can service and repair your vehicle. Heading into Billy Lawrence Chevrolet on Highway 431 South.
One thing to consider on the Career Tech, so there's a slight question that's up a gun. There is talk, there will be a bond, another bond issue statewide, and if so, that's free money.
And that would give us reason to hold off for a few months for the Career Tech, just until we come here, what's going on in the legislative session, because if we're going to get those funds, then we could actually use those and not borrow them.
But I mean, that's...
We don't want to put off on borrowing. We don't want to put off on borrowing, but, I mean, on using those funds.
Right.
But, I mean, what you, but you've given us the second option where we include it in there and we can get the same rate and get it all wrapped up into one, Career Tech and multipurpose.
But we don't have to spend the money right now, is what you're saying.
You don't have to.
We can hold on to it.
We can hold that and if we go with the bond issue, then we can...
Yeah, we would have that money, then we'd have the money to do something.
There's the interest rate.
I'd keep it paid me with that.
Well, I'm not comfortable waiting on policies and my government.
I was going to say, if they come forward with a bond issue and that on their own, then that basically fall in place after a year. That's what we got there.
And I don't know.
We just need some way to hold it off sometimes.
I kind of, I have the same opinion as Jim. I don't know if I would, I'm not saying I would go for the three or four, but I'm not going to hang my hat with money.
Right.
I don't know how that's going to check out.
Now, we could go somewhere in between or we could stick with the 2.8.
If it did check out, it's quite, I'm not sure if we would use a PSCA, PSCA bond money to pay in debt.
No, you can't.
So, it would be a shell game with our, you know, with our project, our money.
Can't we go back for another bond in a year or six months or something? I mean, it costs us the bond issuance cost, but it's based upon the...
So, but the rate probably would be, okay, with the rate.
The rate might be higher, you're right. I mean, because they just raised the rate in December, they'll probably, they'll hold off another six months before they hit it again, but they'll hit it again.
Well, and we have, we have an equity balance now. I don't want to drop it too low, but we have an equity balance. So, I mean, we probably don't need to go for the full 3.4. I was given some estimates and you can go somewhere in between at 3 million and actually get that $200,000 mark because that 2.865 is at 190, so we're not actually too... More comfortable with 2.3.
Laura, are you saying what we, well, not looking at the three, four, so we wouldn't be looking at funding the Career Tech renovations?
Not that we wouldn't do the Career Tech renovations, but we wouldn't possibly fund it through a bond, through a bond issue right now.
Fund it partially through a bond issue, partially through a bond.
Okay, all right.
And the renovations, you know, were primarily to just renovate, not, not building any new construction, that idea discussed.
Right, you're right, with that understanding.
But we're still talking about both, both things.
Right.
Let me clarify this, if the bid, if there's no change orders, are we at any exposure going over this base bid?
There's, the potential is that...
Because you never really know what you, you need to do with a deal, something like that, but so there's no...
We got rain like we just got.
Sure, we have 140.
You know, that's a little swamp out there, they may have to go get something to support it, you know, as opposed to 10 feet like they're, you know, they're all kind of variables.
Right, but I, the exposure part is what concerns me a little bit about cutting it too close and then committing to something else and then us coming in at 3.1 on this.
That 2.7 figure includes the one, the $140,000. So, if we had no change orders, everything went smooth, the very last change order, we would get $140,000 back.
I'd have to see a project without a change order.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Something comes up.
Something never comes in under budget.
Right. Well, I mean, we've already, they've already missed...
Well, first, while we're going to go, we probably need to go like a bit, three.
That's what I'm thinking.
And then if we have, if, if we go for a bond issue, we go with three, that covers our exposure a little bit for anything over. And if not, then we can apply that to the Career Tech.
To the Career Tech.
Yeah. But, you know, I got a couple of questions for Coach Moore, Doug, when we get to this financing part about this. And Doug, whenever you're ready, if you don't mind. Yeah, you can talk there wherever.
I see Coach.
Yeah.
I see, I see that.
I know we talked about all this in the beginning. It refreshed my memory a little bit. When we do this, we're going to put our spring sports and our, and our ladies, they're going to have adequate facilities.
That's correct. There are two sides to our current locker room. One side is our varsity, current varsity football locker room and the other side is the junior varsity locker room. What we can do, there's simply a door that separates the two. Both are fully equipped with lockers. The current varsity side is in pretty good shape, needs carpet and that kind of deal. JV side may need some work, but one can be the girls. I would suggest blocking it down the middle and the other side being the boys. I wouldn't leave a door, obviously, between the two locker rooms. That also opens five coaches' offices and my current office to be a conference room, to be whatever we want it to be. So, as far as housing our athletes, I mean, we're more than just moving into a football building or into an all-sports facility with lockers for the football team. We're putting spring sports and girls into a place where right now, right now, our softball team is dressing in our girls' PP locker. So, that gives us a place to have our athletes.
And keep in mind, the renovations include the existing weight room, turning that into a female facility also, with their own showers, their own restrooms, their own changing areas, and their own workout section.
And that's my, that's one of my biggest concerns that we take care of.
So, our, our athletes. The complex includes the females.
I'm just not high on any of these alternate considerations. In other words, I don't want to gut this. I want, I want it to be solid.
I think we're pretty much, everybody on the same page with that. Yeah.
This, this whole alternate sheet.
Yeah, I think it's not worth it because you start chipping away for a few dollars.
If we got to cut it, that, if we got it, we're that close, we don't need to do it.
We don't need to.
Yes, we can't do it the right way.
Right.
We just need to not do it.
Because we don't need to patch it up.
No, we don't. We don't do it, we don't do it.
But it would be like this for 30 years.
That's exactly.
We need to, we're building as if we're building our own house.
That's right. Same with my grandkids coming back there.
And I wouldn't be so, I'm not so locked in about a completion day either because, you know, like Jimmy said, with the, if we get ball down and rain like we have again, that's going to throw things off. And I look at it like this, is that at least we get the place done, we might not get it when we want it to be, but we get it, we get you a nice facility. So, if you don't get it in September, October, it's okay. It'll be okay. All right.
And don't you go looking for a nice job.
We're going to change it.
Take one of the bar tables.
So, you're okay with that?
I don't need to discuss on this, I am.
I don't know. Anybody have questions or comments?
Yeah, the renovations in the existing locker room, we found out locally.
Those are minimal. We've already replaced carpet and started, yes, already. And a lot of places, we discussed, we do with the tile in the hallway there and after that, we're really just talking about flooring.
We already paid.
We already repaired the restrooms.
Furnished some of it.
You wouldn't be knocking out walls or anything if we had a conference room, you'd just use the existing office space.
Use the existing office space for spring sports. And the construction on the, the impact it would have during the school day would be minimal?
Shouldn't really, the new facility shouldn't really impact the school day at all because it's going to be fenced off anyway.
Ladies, unlock the cash value in your jewelry box. Sell your gold on Dale Road. We buy gold jewelry, then a broken, at Yipoll Flea Market, 354 Dale Road. Sell your gold on Dale Road. Sell your gold on Dale Road. Mr. Fun buys gold on Dale Road. Mr. Fun buys gold on Dale Road. Sell your gold on Dale Road. Sell your gold on Dale Road.
You know, we just have to go out that side, you know, the back, the back entrance to the locker room.
That's, that's part of the pre-construction conference we, and really, I'm real glad Anderson is, I got a little bitter at this point because they're great to work with. They, they really are hardcore about whoever their contractors are, sub, their workers, subcontractors, et cetera. They don't, we build, you know, they don't interact with our students or interact with our staff unless it's, you know, some administrative staff or running. I mean, it's just, they do a really great job managing that part of it and do quality work too.
Well, we've been using several, several major things, so.
Now, to complete the financing, and I think I gave you guys a timeline a few minutes ago, I don't know if you remember it, but it's right at 50 days for the closing of issue. And now, we've done some preliminary work this last month, but we haven't entered into agreement with Fraser Lanier yet for them to really begin fishing on this. So, the financing will come to us about 50 days.
How soon can we start? I mean, as soon as we make a decision?
We make a decision and I pray that I'm calling tomorrow.
And Anderson will start ASAP. Where we get the notes to proceed from, we'll get it.
So, the timing should fall just right when you get it 50. First draw will be...
Yeah, first draw probably...
60 days out.
60 to 80 days out. Sounds like this, right?
Any questions or comments or concerns?
Oh, well...
What is the timetable on the Career Tech renovation?
That's a project that we're going to have to do during the summer, last school time because we're talking about the health science building, we would be displacing that entire class, the ROTC, one Career Tech class and all that would be displaced. So, I mean, that would be something we would have to do in the summer.
Do it this summer and have it completed before the beginning?
The renovations, we would think that, I mean, they're not that expensive, but it's just the timing of everything, you know, do we have a bond issue or are we ready to go forward and spend, you know, our equity balance, you know, with any left over remaining. And at that point, we will be six months into this project and you would know how, you know, change orders are coming, which I think we've all been thorough in this project, but, but I don't know that we've really overlooked anything that we need to do from furniture to cameras, everything. The only thing I can see would be something structurally, you know, foundation-wise maybe, but we've already got core soil samples and they gave us the go-ahead on that. I mean, they've already drilled down and done the preliminary, we've already paid for that. So, I, you know, I really can't see anything that we would necessarily need to change.
And have the bids gone out for the Career Tech renovation?
No, we're going to have to get, we're going to have to start that, we're going to start tomorrow.
But, I mean, we're, we're talking about a possible October completion date for the multipurpose, but we think that the career renovation can be completed before the beginning of the school year?
That was the last thing when we talked to the key associates about doing that renovation work, on just, just to renovate that timeframe.
The school get out until...
Yes, we would have, we would have to start as soon as school got out and we'd have to improve a couple of weeks before school starts.
It would be kind of like that project when it was renovated, comes, we just have a real, real strict timeline. We'd have to be flexible enough, Steve, to let them work 24/7 if they needed to.
Whether or not really a disadvantage there, because there's...
I'm sure there's some...
There's a lot of difference inside.
600, 600 what we have on that?
That's what we estimated, like, so we're going to...
Well, no more when the bids come back.
Come back at 450, could come on 60.
1.2?
No, 11, no.
Hate to be double down on one. You say sell, I say skip.
One thing I can say about the key associates is when they, you know, they gave me some prices and what their estimates were for another facility they were building, they were within $100,000. And this was a new complex, it was another multipurpose facility. I mean, they came in at like, you know, under $100,000. It was over a million dollars, like a million eighty, maybe nine, something like that. I mean, I'm confident in that.
Any other questions? Well, we will stop this process and call a board meeting then.
Welcome, everyone. At 6:35, we have a form, do I hear a motion to open the meeting and approval of the agenda?
Salute.
All in favor?
Chairman, we have four items of new business to consider. First being the athletic facility bid. Superintendent recommends a low bid of $2,715,100 for Anderson Construction Company of Fort Gaines. We approve the construction contracts for the athletic sports complex at Yipoll High School to be executed.
All right, we have a motion for 2A. All right, recommendation, do I have a motion?
Salute.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Ah. Motion carries, Nancy.
2B is financing of that athletic facility. Superintendent recommends that Fraser Lanier Company serves as sports investment banker for the financing of that athletic sports complex at Yipoll High School or possibly the Career Tech renovations, it'll amount up to $3 million.
We have a recommendation for 2B for athletic facility finance. Do I hear a motion?
Salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Ah. Motion carries, Nancy.
Out of 2C on new businesses consulting contract of agreement with Dr. Elizabeth Davis. I think it maybe starts tomorrow and runs through January 31st. Superintendent recommends that be approved.
On motion, on recommendation 2C for the agreement for Dr. Davis, do I hear a motion?
Salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Ah. And 2D?
Salute.
Superintendent recommends approval of Superintendent Dr. Elizabeth Davis's contract as superintendent. I think there may be a forthcoming amendment, I'd like to amend that contract on the terms of termination date, extend that to June 30th, 2019.
So, we have a motion for approval of superintendent contract with the amendment of extending the contract from January 31st, 2019 to June 30th, 2019, to make it end of our school year. Do I have a motion for approval?
Two more.
Second.
All in favor? Ah. Motion carries, Nancy. There's no other business before the board? Do I hear a motion for German?
Salute.
All in favor?
Ah.
Welcome aboard, Dr. Davis.
Yipoll Glass and Construction Company LLC has been... Uphaul Glass and Construction Company, LLC, has been locally owned and operated for more than 30 years. Installs shower doors, mirrors, new windows, replacement windows, screens, storm windows and doors. Rebuild cloth awnings and aluminum canopies. Need a new storefront for your business? Call the company that can take care of all of your glass needs, including automotive glass. Located at 121 Inlet Road, call 687-2471. Emergency after-hours service available.